There it is, live on Currie Radio and Currie County TV. Welcome, everybody. This is January 19th Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a full crowd in there. For those of you in the hallway, the speakers are on out there. And if we need to, we can get maintenance over here and get chairs. So there's two speakers right out in this hallway. If you don't want to come in and stand.
Can you hear us out there? Okay.
You can hear good? Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We're going to call the order and we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So stand with me and join in with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks.
We were quite synced up on that, weren't we?
There was an echo. Okay, amendment slash approval of the agenda, gentlemen. Do we have any amendments?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to pull item 5A. We just have more and better information coming all the time from Union County, Malheur County, Baker City, and I think I've worked it out so one or two of the Union County Commissioners can call in on the second. And I'd also like to encourage the board, we'll consider that a workshop and take a full hour.
Okay.
Just some really good things happening there. So we'll pull that and postpone it, table it until February 2nd.
Hey, 5A, 5As a poll.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, how about consent agenda and regular action discussion items? If I hear not.
Commissioner, Anthony.
Hi, Anthony.
I was thinking we could go ahead and cancel the executive session for today. The main issue is how to evolve. I'm not going to be there. Might be easier to put it off till next week.
Fine by me, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
Okay.
I do have one more thing, though, on the presentation. Let's see. Just setting up the times, 9:45 for Lone Rock, if we possibly can work that in amongst the action items. I have nothing on consent agenda, thank you again.
I think that will probably be good. I know we have a lot of public comments, which is good, and 9:45 will be right around there. So I just got word, Eric, that they can't hear us real good out in that hallway.
Turn the dial there.
So.
Well, let's see if we can figure that out.
Did you turn that dial some, JJ?
Yeah.
Check, check.
Is it better now?
You just have better hearing, Brett.
So you can see, there's two black speakers up in that hallway.
Check, check. Okay, they got it better. It's better now, he said.
All right.
All righty.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approval of the agenda.
As amended, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Moved in second, approve the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Public comments, everybody's allowed three minutes. First is Mary Rowe. She has a three-minute presentation and then a announcement for SCBI, just a public announcement. Oh, and she got a ton of paperwork for us.
This is the Lane County ADA Transitional Plan, and it's also been the county had to say about. I think I may have given you a little bit too much.
Oh, I'll read every page.
He can have some of mine.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't really get down.
Okay.
We can get it later.
We'll get it.
Sure.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
And then it also is a newspaper clipping and minutes from a meeting in the past.
You have to talk to the mics so everyone can hear. Could you go to the mics, because everyone has to, by law? Yeah, thank you. It's supposed to be recorded.
Okay, so what I gave you was a copy of the Lane County ADA Transitional Plan and also a copy of a newspaper clipping and minutes from a meeting shortly after, a couple years after the ADA passed, the ADA Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. That was in 1992, which Chief Deputy County Clerk Shelley Doyle found for me yesterday. I did a records request. Okay, so I'm Mary Rowe. I am here today to provide you with information about the Americans with Disabilities Act Transitional Plan and how their implementation relates to our county government. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 is a civil rights law that prohibits discrimination based upon disability. It protects individuals who are experiencing disabilities from discrimination in services programs and activities provided by state and local government. The ADA amended act of 2008, or ADAA, is an act to restore the intent and protections of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, or ADA. The definition of disability, which increases the number and types of persons protected under the ADA and other federal nondiscrimination laws. It took effect on January 1st, 2009 at the federal level and was completely incorporated into Title II and Title III of the ADA on July 15th, 2016. The ADA stipulated that every public agency with more than 50 employees have an ADA Transitional Plan by January 26, 1995, and that this plan be updated every five years, which must include public comments. Such a plan identifies barriers to access, methods to remove them, a schedule to accomplish this, and the ADA does provide exemptions based upon cost if there is a sufficient financial burden and stresses negotiation over litigation. I just gave you a copy of Lane County's ADA Transitional Plan, which was updated in 2019. I submitted a records request to find any ADA Transitional Plan that our county government may have, and I spoke to former County Council Jerry Urbidge yesterday, who could not remember if we ever had an ADA Transitional Plan. I received the results of my records request yesterday from Chief Deputy County Clerk Shelley Doyle. There was a press release and a discussion of the minutes from this. It seems that the building department has made some changes in accordance with the ADA, but that the correct ADA format was not completely followed. In February of 2021, I asked the BOC to implement some ADA training after experiencing some discrimination by a county official. Thanks to the support of County Clerk Renee Colon and of HR Director Julie Swift and County Council Pope, a half-hour virtual training was given in August. I then asked that more trainings for county staff and officials be given. More are now being considered. In October, I discovered that an ADA Transitional Plan should be implemented, and I am now asking that our county government be in compliance with the ADA by doing so. Thank you. Now, as for my announcement, South Coast Business Employment Corporation, or SCABEC, is in serious need of volunteer drivers who live in Currie County for their assisted medical transportation program, for senior citizens who are going for important medical appointments such as surgery. If anyone is interested, please call Liz Stevens at 541-269-2013. Commissioner Pash, I know that you are on SCABEC's board. Do you have anything to add to this?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that is a good announcement. If anybody would like to be a volunteer driver, they do pay mileage, so it's a volunteer with a little benefit, and I think they have one driver right now.
Yes.
And so they could use help.
The driver they have right now is in his 80s. So the people in this county are completely dependent on this one person who lives in Brookings, and they pay mileage and gas, and it's very generous so that the person, you know, comes out ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of working on a transitional plan, and I'd like to appoint you as leader of that.
The transitional plan?
For ADA. Updating, either we don't have a plan or we need to update it.
Public comments, no motions are made. Joe Wilson.
I would like Mrs. Green to go before me, if you could.
Okay. I thought she was, I didn't.
Now she is, if you allow her.
Yep, yeah.
Wow.
Now we're in trouble.
You are.
You gave me his, oh, there it is, Gretchen, I'm sorry.
Down.
Just closer to you there. Great.
Is that better?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just two issues, I'll be brief.
Okay.
Addressing the homeless and COVID ARP money. 2017 Portland became a sanctuary city. 2018 Martin versus Boise was handed a verdict by the Supreme Court that people could camp wherever they felt like, and COVID happened in 2020. Our homeless problem started years before COVID, and I have objection to any funds being used to address homeless people with COVID relief money. That said, Ofer School has been brought up as a possible housing place for the homeless, and $300,000 is being requested from the ARP money. Ofer School got built when I was a kid, and I went to second grade in the new school. My family donated the land for the school. It was to always be held for education, but when they annexed or when they were given more property by my family, somebody left that clause out. The school has septic issues, due diligence needs to be done, but all my family members would be rolling in their grave if they knew what was going on out there now and what is being proposed. It's going to ruin the community of Ofer. A way of life is going to die, so no to those funds. As far as throwing money to homeless, I myself was once homeless. I didn't want a hand out, I wanted a hand up. I was a single mother. I managed to get grants. I went back to college. I got my education. I spent two years homeless. These people don't need a hand out. They need a hand up or get out. Sorry.
Thank you. Now, Joe, you're up, bud.
Gentlemen, my name is Joe Wilson. I live in the Seaco Beach area. I've been told that to become a native here in Currie County, you have to live here 25 years, but Mrs. Green said that might not even be good enough yet, so I haven't ways to go yet before I'm a native. I spent 50 years in the heavy industrial steel fabrication business throughout the country. I was consulted for the Tesla Corporation. You probably couldn't go to a paper mill anywhere in the Pacific Northwest that I did not put steel into it. When my wife and I decided to sell the business and retire, everywhere we've ever been in this country, we felt like that Currie County was the most beautiful place we've ever went to, and I've really met a lot of nice people here. I think we have some of the nicest people I've ever met anywhere in this country. And I didn't come here to speak about what was good for the homeless. I came here to speak about what's good for Currie County. If this facility is given $300,000, or if this facility is allowed to operate in this county, I've been in places in the Pacific Northwest, in Portland, Eugene, where they've spent millions and millions of dollars on the homeless, and all it does is increase the amount of homeless. And this facility has like eight acres, 20,000, almost 20,000 square feet, you could have 10,000 homeless there. Now, I've already had one businessman tell me that he asked a new homeless person in the area, why he came here? And he said that somebody in Portland gave him a bus ticket to come to the Oregon coast. Now, you open that facility up, that will attract thousands and thousands of homeless and all the trouble that they bring with them. Do we need that in this county? Do you have enough sheriff's deputies to handle the crime? And anybody that says that putting it in a rural area will keep it out of an urban area, when we have buses running up and down this county daily? I was in Portland recently, and a businessman, I asked him about the homeless situation, and I said, "Why are they located around your business so heavily?" He said, "Because they like to locate where they can steal." And then he corrected me, he said, "We don't have a homeless problem, we have a drug problem." He said, "Years ago, it would take you about $30 to get high for a couple days. Now, with the drugs as strong as they are and cheap as they are, you can take $30 and get high for over a week." And that's what's going on in those cities. Do we want, they will be shipping that to us. Do we want this in our community? If anything, if you as commissioners can do is do no more harm, don't do harm. This is not good for Currie County. Now, I'm sure there's ways of helping homeless, but not by making this a place where they are dumped from all over the West Coast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So that was Mr. Joe Wilson. Now we have Joseph Smith.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Smith. I've lived in Gold Beach for about 20 years. From my house in the middle of town, I can see homeless activity every day. Over those 20 years, I've interacted with homeless persons on many occasions. Some have begged at my door or stolen things from my property. A few have helped me as day labor. Fewer still have stayed in my home short-term, and I've ongoing long-term relations with a few. One of them told me recently that there are only 10 to 15 homeless in town. I suspect a few more couch surfers may be around, but not evident from my vantage point. All homeless, all homeless that I've encountered were abusing drugs or alcohol or both, and I might also add people. They lacked self-discipline to maintain a job. This was evident when I hired them as day labor. After an hour of working in my backyard pulling weeds, they were ready to take their pay and leave. They steal from each other and innocent citizens when they have the opportunity. They also commit fraud against government welfare programs, ongoing. This proposed communist federal boondoggle will not solve our homeless problem because the problem is spiritual at its root. A building will not address this problem at all. In fact, it will only make it worse. I've observed government welfare programs and their effects on multi-generational families for decades. It's obvious that government can't solve spiritual problems. Remember Johnson's Great Society? If it were a success, we wouldn't have the problems we're experiencing today. Free money from big government is not free. It has strings and hidden consequences. This grant is part of a long-range communist strategy to destroy our community and lifestyle and ultimately our freedom. Just say no to this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
The pronunciation.
You can adjust those so you don't have to, you can adjust those microphones if you need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want you to hear me loud and clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Jean Chene Soderman. On the East Coast, they pronounce it Chene. On the West Coast, it's Chaney. Same letters, but it's Chene. Having been an international journalist for over 30 years, I have seen it all, I have heard it all. I went to the United Nations Conference in New York in 2000. I sat and I listened to the communists, and I heard their plan. Their plan is the same that you are trying to institute here in Currie County. It's called housing for the poor, and they're starting to implement it by having not just a single house, but have two owners, then three owners of the same property. In the syllabus of the Global Biodiversity Assessment Report, it's over 1,000 pages, they say they want to destroy two things. Number one, private property. Number two, the Christian religion. And having been with Radio Liberty, a Christian radio station for over 30 years, I value my religion, I value as a woman my independence, the ability to make a decision for myself and the family and not have a decision made by the state. And that's what we're coming into now, a Marxist communist state. They will get rid of religion, and any thoughts that you might have personally, you have to abide by the ideology of the communist Marxist state. I'm very disappointed you're even bringing this up. This should be brought before the voters of Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Quick comment?
Sure.
We're not responsible for the applications that come to us for the ARP funds. I don't know of any of the commissioners that have promoted anything but veterans and workforce housing. We're listening, but we're not instigating or pushing for free housing. We're just going to look at the applications that come in. We appreciate your comments.
Right, it's federal money, too. We pay taxes. That is our money.
Yes, ma'am. Judy Baker.
Judy, Judy.
Good morning, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Judy Baker, a proud resident of Gold Beach. I am a retired registered nurse with my master's in guidance and counseling, and I didn't say that to brag, please. It's just I want you to know where I'm coming from, because I have counseled all types of individuals. And I have had firsthand experience in living in a state, South Dakota, and I traveled in my job and saw the devastating results of giving homeless people free homes. I saw homes erected and destroyed within months. Most of the homes, most of the homeless tore off trimmings, anything they could get and destroy so that they could sell to support their habits of drugs and alcohol. They even broke windows for animals to drink out of their bathroom. I mean, I wouldn't have believed it except I saw it firsthand. And they couldn't pay for the electricity, they weren't shown how to take care of it, they weren't provided any rehabilitation or mental health or any kind of structure. No rehabilitation occurs when you give away a home. It not only deteriorated the land, but attracted a drove of homeless. It also destroyed the mental and physical health of homeless. There was no incentive to be a contributing human being or to get any kind of rehabilitation. Now, Gold Beach, I've lived many places, and it is the most caring community I have ever lived in. I know people who work 40 hours a week and they still take time to volunteer. I have volunteered in many venues. Currently, I'm working weekly at the Christian Food Bank. There's two food banks in town in this small community, multiple soup kitchens, plus I know of multiple churches who actually give people gift certificates, who provide shelter. I know people, including myself, who have allowed the homeless to live in my home, but not for free. They had to work for it because of that they became productive human beings and did get some help, because we do have a problem. Also, at the Christian Food Bank, the homeless can get daily food, and you get to know their names and get attached to them, too. When we find people who need extra help, we act. So I'm just concerned, and I'm totally against free housing, but I am concerned how it would be structured, you know, if someone is going to monitor them, because these people do need help. But never seen anybody giving, had anything given to them on a silver platter where they turned out to be good human beings, so I'm very much against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. True Howting. Did I do okay on?
Not too bad.
Not too bad.
Not too bad, actually. Hoteling.
Hoteling, okay.
Kind of, yeah, modernized it when I got married.
Okay.
My name is True Hoteling. My husband Ron and I moved here about five years ago, so we're pretty newbies. We love Gold Beach, like you all. We're also new business owners, probably for about a month, and we're right downtown. And my main reason for being here is.
Plug that business right now if you want to, because it's.
No, I'm not going to do that. It's a little greenhouse. But the main reason I'm here is I want to show up. I want you to see my face. I saw, I just learned about this situation just a few days ago, and I saw that this meeting said "public invited," and I don't want to be a person that gripes about a situation and doesn't show up. So I'm here to say that. I can't quote a bunch of statistics, but I can say that being in our business downtown, we're on Third Street, and the little house is 1925 little house. It's gorgeous, it just has a great personality, but it's also been a home for the homeless for a while, and many of them still believe that they own it. We've had some intimidation where they don't want to give way to us when we're there, and it's kind of waning because we pray over that house, and we pray for guidance, and we also, we want to, we know that there is an issue. We're not sticking our head in the sand that there is not an issue. But we have found raw chicken hanging on our back doorknob because they got food somewhere, but they have no way to cook it. We found some drugs in the back. We pick up trash along with all of our neighbors on that corner every day. They do, even though we've said they can sit in out of the rain when it's raining, they leave their garbage in their cigarette butts and things like that. Now, I understand, maybe they just weren't raised right, or maybe that's just a part of their culture now. I don't really know, but we really take pride in that, and we're going around behind and cleaning it up. And that's part of being in downtown, I suppose. But we all have a pride here, and we don't want Gold Beach to go the way of Bakersfield or some trash dump. And I really believe that it is our duty as Christian people to look out as much as we can for the needs of people. And I love that there are soup kitchens and food pantries, and I understand there's even a place for them to take showers, and I think that that needs to be promoted more. Our churches need to get more involved, and I just believe that, I mean, we have a thriving Facebook community here, of which I'm not on because they criticize me on Facebook, but you can get the word out for things to be volunteered, and I think, like the drivers that are needed. I think there are lots of people that would volunteer if they knew about it, and I only accidentally learned about this. So I'm showing up, and I just want you to know that I'm just going to keep showing up. I want to learn about this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm not for it, either.
Thank you. Dwayne Robert? No, I did that wrong. Diane Robert.
She do.
Sorry, Diane. Sorry.
Let me take my mask off. I'm Diane Robert.
I'm Diane Robert.
That's not a first.
My husband and I own Gold Beach Barbecue.
Okay.
Okay, so we have hired multiple people who we helped get housing. And the only thing the paycheck and the tips did is get them right back into drugs and alcohol. I see all this money, see what the thing, what's being advertised and what's going around by mouth are two separate things. So the information isn't accurate. So that's an issue right there. My concern, and I'm going to be very honest, is I'd like to see that money go in for supportive services. It goes into therapy for them because they're all going to respond better to that than free housing. So that's where we're coming from. We do give to the community. We do donate for the homeless. And we do help with meals for their meetings. And we definitely want to be very good with that. I really believe the community can support the homeless responsibly. But to provide that and they don't have to do anything back is a genuine concern. And definitely concern for our businesses. Because none of the businesses, I spoke to several business owners, they don't even know about this. Public needs to know and you need to hear from the public also. But I am really promoting that you seriously look at better services for them, especially mental health. And I think we're going to get better reaction from that than say, "Okay, now you got somewhere to live, okay, do your gardening." That's been tried and not has been successful in many communities. So that's where I'm coming from and it's good to meet you all.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Maggie Daly. Hi, Maggie. Yep.
Hi. My name is Maggie Daly and I'm a recent retiree here in Gold Beach. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Prior to retiring, I worked in the Portland, Oregon area for a multidisciplinary design firm. And I'd like to address the plans for the new county building that were presented at last week's workshop in the feasibility study. It looks to me like on those plans, the main entry to the building was moved to Colvin. And in terms of the phasing of the project, that makes a lot of sense because that's the part of the building that's going to be built first. However, I'd like to just take a moment to consider the current courthouse and its position on Ellensburg. So to me, it's a landmark in town. I can easily tell anybody, "Oh, go past the courthouse." And they'll find it even without their phone, right? So how does it make, how is that landmark created? So there's certain design elements that create that. There's a huge setback to the building. It's bilaterally symmetrical. You've got these stairs leading up to the entrance, the two plinths on either side, the two, oops, sorry, the two-story entry. All of that says, this is the county seat, you know? And there's some pride in that and a presence in it. And it's on Ellensburg, which is the main dragon town. So given the need to phase the project, and so the last phase would be what takes place on Ellensburg, how can you achieve that statement of sort of civic authority? I do think it's really important to have that be on Ellensburg just because it is the main dragon town. So I looked further at the plans and it looks to me like an awful lot of space is given within the jailhouse part of the design to dayroom area. I don't know anything about jailhouse design, but maybe there's an opportunity to take some of that space and use it differently. You can ask the architects that question. You can ask your current jailhouse managers that question. If some of that, if not all that space is needed, then you could use that to create a bigger setback on Ellensburg. Maybe even carve out a little L in the building so you can create an entry plaza there. And then you could, then you could put some presence onto Ellensburg when that comes. And you could even take some of the little bit of Moore Street that you're proposing to vacate the right of way and use that as sort of, to create an entry and so you can create some presence. I don't recommend just changing the facade treatment because those kinds of things tend to get cut at the end when you're doing budget cutting. So yeah, I just think we ought to make a really proud authoritative statement about being the county seat on Ellensburg in that building. And I think it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Cam Lynn.
We'll guide you.
Full-time job, the guide knee. My name is Cam Lynn. I came up to speak on safe injection sites just because I will not be able to be here this afternoon. And I think you have a workshop regarding that.
Yes.
However, I think because my comments are kind of umbrella comments, they're general principle comments. They probably follow along with what's been said regards to homeless circumstance as well. They're just basic ideas or principles. I don't come here to provide any new information regarding the political issue of safe injections sites, only to remind all of us of certain, what I call eternal ideas or principles. Commissioners are public servants. You're public servants and your charge is to serve the citizens of Curry County. As such, you're expected, I think by all of us, to do what is right, not wrong, to do what is good and not bad, and to do what is virtuous and not contribute to vice. One of the elements of this brave new world that we now live in is the idea that everything must be a compromise. We have a current expression, I think it's something like, "We need to reach across the aisle," or some such thing. I think especially as older folks, we probably come to a good and sound conclusion as to how this compromise or reaching across the aisle is actually working for citizens, not just of Curry County, but everywhere. Not real well. Another part of this brave new world that we live in now is the idea that, well, you know, there's two sides to every story, right? Two sides to every story. Well, often, there's a right side and a wrong side. It's not mentioned very often, but I think it's something that we should pay attention to. There's two sides, yes, there is. The right side and the wrong side. We ignore that at our own peril. If as elected officials or any public servants, the truth has become soft and squishy, what is good has become soft and squishy, and what is right has become soft and squishy, what is virtuous has become soft and squishy, well, probably those public servants need to reevaluate their role as public servants. Now, I'm, I think that I'm preaching to the choir here, but I say this by means of a reminder or encouragement to you folks for you to do what is right regardless of who's watching and regardless of the perceived consequences. And thank you. It's always a privilege to be able to speak before the commission.
Thank you, Cam.
Thanks, Cam.
Thank you, Cam. Good to see you.
Nancy Sue Rose.
Nancy Sue Rose. I live in Nasika Beach. I've lived in Gold Beach for eight years. And eight and a half years now. I just have a couple things I really didn't know. A lot of people were going to be here to talk about something I didn't know about, but I am in agreement with them to a certain extent because the ARP funds, I thought, were for COVID-related things. And I think the small businesses of this county have really, really suffered. And if we support you some of that money, most of that money, to support our small businesses who have been hurt, it will benefit every single person in this county, whether poor or rich. Because if we lose more small businesses than we already have, it's going to be really sad for Curry County. So thank you guys for speaking about that. And in relation to that, I have been studying, I've never really studied politics, but I did start studying history extensively forty years ago. And the UN long-range plans are scary to me, very scary. And a lot of what's happening today are part of that plan. As far as the vaccine mandate, that's just another, you know, spear thrown at the individual of losing our freedoms. I am for freedom of religion as well as freedom from what we are, what we put into our bodies, what we do to our individual body. And so I hope people really remember that our constitution protects these things. And if we lose that, then really, I don't think it's worth living. I'm seventy-one years old. And when people say, "Aren't you scared of dying of COVID?" No, there's worse things than death. And losing my freedoms is worse than dying in my mind. So that's how strongly I feel about it. And I was going to say more on that, but I'll leave that till next week. I'm here almost, I mean, every, not every week, but I'm here for most of these meetings. So I'll speak to the other things next week. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Nancy Sue. Brett Cecil on behalf of Gordon Clay. Okay, pass. You betcha.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Brett Cecil from Port Orford. I'm also the chair of the Curry County Democrats. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the Democrats today, but I'm filling in for Gordon since he can't be here. Let me get adjusted. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay. And again, we've established I'm Brett Cecil. I'm speaking on his behalf. My purpose today is to fact-check statements made in the transcript of the January 5th Board of Commissioners meeting. Statement, quote, "Someone from the CDC said masks don't work," unquote. Fact, on January 4th, quote, "Cloth masks still okay to use to protect against Omicron variant, CDC says," closed quote. Statement, quote, "Cases don't necessarily mean sickness because they don't give us that information. It just means there's a lot more testing." This statement is not sourced. Fact, note how many people entering the hospital with other emergencies and testing positive for COVID. A case for more testing, not less, to identify people who have COVID but may not have or ignore symptoms. Statement, quote, "The United States does not publish when people are tested and are positive with COVID. The United States doesn't differentiate between those that are sick and those that are in the hospital, sick with COVID, but Canada does. And I doubt that Canada illness is much different than ours." Statement, not sourced. Fact, OHA does publish this information Monday through Friday on hospitalizations, ICU beds occupied, none in Curry County, deaths, who has Delta and who has Omicron in Oregon. Statement, quote, "Canada, it is now that the vaccinated are now testing positive more than the unvaccinated." Not sourced. Statement, quote, "And also in the hospital, there are now in Canada, there are more positive testing in the hospitals, vaccinated, than they are in the unvaccinated." So we have crossed that tipping point. So it's really hard now for people to insist that people be vaccinated and those who want a vaccine mandate to restrict unvaccinated people from participating in society. That should now go away. This statement is not sourced. Fact, the Canadian hospital source, Enhanced Epidemiological Summary, confirmed cases of COVID-19 following vaccination in Ontario, December 14th, 2020, to December 12th, 2021, says just the opposite. Statement, quote, "It doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. You're going to get COVID." Statement is not sourced. I, meaning Gordon Clay, and I, I and Fauci agree, quote, "Virtually everybody is going to wind up getting exposed and likely get infected. But if you're vaccinated and if you're boosting, the chances of getting sick are very, very low," Fauci added. Statement, quote, "You're going to get it if you don't keep up your health." Statement is not sourced. The fact is, quote, "Keeping your health, sleep, eat well, reduce stress and unhealthy habits. However, it's keeping up on new vaccine and boosters to keep the severity of COVID at a minimal." And ask, and this is the ask, "Don't make claims you can't back up, especially during this time of massive numbers of citizens getting infected." Curry ranks second, and I'm assuming this is in Oregon. So in Oregon, Curry ranks second. And listeners, especially the forty-six percent who aren't fully vaccinated, fact-check what you believe. It may be the best decision you've made in your life. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Mr. Clay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cecil.
Any questions or comments that you'd like to make?
Just a quick comment. Gordon is comparing to the four counties, which is Coos, Curry, Douglas. I think not second in the state. I just want to clarify that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I do.
So that ends the official public comments of our meeting. But since we have so many folks that are out there, if you'd like to, I'm going to give you a chance. If you'd like to speak to something without doing a public comment, I'm going to open that up because there's a lot of folks out there that didn't speak. Come on in if you'd like to. Otherwise, we're going to move on. So I don't see a rush for the door. And so I'll take that as you're just happy to be here and listening. So it's nine forty-nine. If we could-
You do go to Lone Rock if we can?
Lone Rock, if we can get them on board. We'll do that presentation. It'd be five B on the agenda if they're-
I don't see that in our options here, just mouses. Just go later.
Maybe Eric?
Mr. Eric, Mr. Wizard.
Help me, Mr. Wizard.
JJ.
We should have Lone Rock on here, but I didn't see him off. You at the mound? Yeah. Hi, David. We're going to do Lone Rock and then we're going to do the AVVA. Yes, they are separate. I'm so sick of this stuff.
Is Lone Rock on there?
Maybe they're not. We can go ahead.
Well, no.
We can go ahead and do them.
Unless you-
Yeah. They're both on.
If Lone Rock's not on there?
Yes. We'll go ahead and do that now.
Thanks, Eric.
John, this is Court, can you hear me?
It's going to be too loud. Say that right now.
Hello?
John.
John, Jennifer, this is Court, can you hear me? John, Jennifer, this is Court, can you hear me?
Yes, Court, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Welcome, very good. Jennifer, you're coming in good. Was Ruth able to join us?
Ruth is right here next to me. Can you see us on the video?
Terrific. Well, I'm going to have a little time here to introduce John, so good to see you. Bets on mental health care, new ruling, the federal government, yeah, we're going to shut some doors here, I think. On their health insurance, no copay required when they're getting counseled or treated for any suicidal thoughts. So, that was very good news, I want to pass that on, and it's an honor to introduce the next three people here. Great veteran warrior John Birch is on the screen here, is a medically retired veteran of the United States Army, is a Staff Sergeant with just over fifteen years. Service and always advocating for our veterans. John has been involved with Associates of Vietnam Veterans of America for fourteen years, and is a former ten-year Region Eight Director. John resigned his position and responsibilities recently to care for an ailing mother. Jennifer Ellis, President, Local Chapter 805 AVVA, Representative, and recently voted in as a Regional Eight Director. She is accompanied by Ruth Feliciano, Vice President, AVVA, Chapter 805. Jennifer's husband is Bruce Ellis, who served as a United States Marine from August 1970 through January 1975. He served with the Third Battalion, Fourth Marines, as a Force Recon Marine. If you don't know what Force Recon, that's the toughest of the Marines, proud to say. He survived fourteen months of combat in Vietnam, I want to say that again, survived fourteen months of combat in the Vietnam War. And because of his service, Bruce developed severe PTSD, which has given Jennifer a unique perspective on the consequences of such a disorder and the impact of it on the families of our Vietnam veterans. AVVA, Chapter 805, has developed a guitar music program entitled Moods and Music to assist in combating PTSD. This is a six-week guitar course for veterans where they are given instruction, a guitar that they receive along with a music book and a stand. In addition, they experience fellowship and support with one another, and that helps to deter them from isolation. The program has graduated approximately eighty students, and I assume that's in Oregon. Bruce and Jennifer are former Currie County Gold Beach residents, and of course, I'm working on getting them to move back here. So, welcome to you, and just great to have you here, and I, we're going to go to Bruce, excuse me, we're going to go to John first. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, I'll pass on my introductions since you took care of that so well, Court, and I want to thank your Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, for allowing me to speak today. My purpose for attending is to honor a member of your community. I've only known this person for a short period of time, and that short amount of time, I have a third many acts of selfless dedicated activism of the highest caliber. This person's heart act to follow, the list of accomplishments by this person is at the astonishment level. This person has set on numerous committees, boards, and Veterans Associations, providing aid and support to those in need, whether it is assistance to finding housing, or disadvantaged veterans, or helping coordinate activities in food banks, gathering resources for the community, and bringing better health care for the veterans of Currie County. The points I list, that's just the short list, there's more. This person's active and top volunteer and advocate is beyond the wow level. I want people to know her activities during COVID were astonishing. What I have listed is only a portion of this person's actions. She is a person who will find the resources to accomplish her mission. The award this person will receive is a once-a-year award, and only one recipient will receive this award in that timeframe. And presenting the, and presented to AVVA members for outstanding veteran community service, this award on behalf of the AVVA Jennifer Ellis, Region Eight Director, and to present the award on behalf of AVVA Jennifer Ellis, Region Eight Director of AVVA, I now take this moment to recognize a dear friend among Currie County's hardest-working advocates. Join me in recognition for Connie Hunter, Chapter 805 AVVA, 2021 recipient of the AVVA Fellowship Award. For years of dedication to the veterans of Currie County, their families, and the community of Brookings, you have worked hard for many years, and you're selected as a recipient for an award that you have earned many times over. Connie, as a friend, I applaud you and thank you for your service.
Connie, you are an integral part of this community, and many of our local veterans and their families are grateful for your dedicated service, your compassion, and devotion to them. On behalf of the Associates of Vietnam Veterans of America, it is an honor and a privilege to present the AVVA 2021 Fellowship Award to Connie Hunter. Thank you for a job well done.
Yay!
I think this is a first, I think Connie is speechless, and I never thought I would witness that.
Oh, but I wrote a speech.
Well, for that one second, you were speechless, that's an amazing feat right there.
We love you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
John and Jennifer, don't leave yet.
Lord, lead me to be a worthwhile return on your investment in me. Alongside AVVA and its leaders Jennifer Ellis, Ruth Feliciano, John Birch, Brian Wadres' family, Tom and Nadine Owen, and many others, including Donnie Dotson, AVVA has remained the wind beneath my wings when my tail was dragging, and you know what I'm talking about. When you grow up in a big family with a World War II Navy dad and a German mommy, both who survived the Great Depression, you soon learn it's not always about you. So, let's redirect. Please recognize our Currie County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council's Veterans Task Group members' meritorious humanitarian service during the COVID-19 pandemic, behavioral health, opioid, and housing crises in our underserved, highly rural county that includes federally designated high-poverty hotspot, and more veterans per capita over all other counties in Oregon. Currie County is blessed by an amazing A-team in the trenches. Please thank Lauren and Jason Farmer, Abdul and Hazel Ahmad, Max Rusk, Gray Boom, Linda Nelson, Ann Paulson, Dallin Niederfeld, Paul Hoynacki, Calvin Casey, Janice Payne, Pastor Lance, and Donna Canaus, Pastor Michael and Cindy Lancaster, St. Tim's Free Pizza Kitchen Crew under the leadership of Chef Robert Barker and Father Bernie Lindley, Cindy Flores and family, David Lahon, Frances Ledbetter and family, Daniel and Stephen Moses, my cousin Dane Ewing, David Sullivan, Tom and Kelly Slattery, Professor Ray Skip Hunter, and our honorary members of, excuse me, honorary members who have given us support, Jack Daggett, Gold Star Father, Ambience by the Sea, Deborah Harward, my nephew Scott Snidicker, Jim Royal Freericks, David Gilmore, founding director emeritus Gordon Clay, Chair Katrina Upton, and all who have served the efforts of suicide prevention on behalf of our Currie County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, including our Commissioner Liaison, Court Voice. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing the fellows who make this AVVA National Fellowship Award the blessing of a lifetime. This award belongs to you, to our Veterans Task Group, AVVA, and to Currie County's Veterans Service Members, allies and their families, including the family members of the fallen. Finally, Commissioner Liaison to CVSO, Commissioner Chris Pash. We pledged $500 to CVSO Veterans Fund with a heartfelt thank you to our Veterans Service Officers, along with $1,000 from the nonprofit that was started when my nephew Army Ranger Kyle died from wounds sustained in a firefight in Iraq. Those funds are on their way with much gratitude. Thank you for the privilege to serve. Please note, we will be holding a hyperbaric oxygen therapy virtual and in-person town hall in the near future. Let's do this together, Currie County. John and Jennifer, thank you. You guys have lifted me up many times.
Thank you, Connie.
Connie, wait just a minute. John, you may be familiar with the statistics here, but the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington, DC, you're probably aware that they have a traveling memorial that goes throughout the United States. I had the honor and privilege of being in Coos County in 2018, and I have a picture, I won't bring it up now, but it shows how it's disassembled and then reassembled, and it's just incredible to see. So, it's a traveling memorial, and, you know, I feel a real responsibility to often mention and be aware of what happened in Vietnam, and so, Mr. Chair, it'll just take me less than a minute to read this here. On that Vietnam Wall Memorial, there are fifty-eight thousand soldiers that are recognized. Almost forty thousand were twenty-two years or younger. Eighty-two hundred were nineteen. Thirty-three thousand, over half, were only eighteen years old. Twelve were seventeen years old, and five were sixteen. There are three sets of fathers and sons on the wall. Thirty-one sets of parents lost two of their sons. Again, thirty-one sets of parents lost multiple sons. Nine hundred and ninety-seven were killed on their first day to arrive in Vietnam. Almost fifteen hundred were killed on their last day there. Eight women and nurses were on the wall. Two hundred and forty-four soldiers were awarded the United States Medal of Honor. We just have a moment of silence, John, thank you for your service. Jennifer, communicate to Bruce how proud we are to know him and how much we appreciate the sacrifices that he and your family made. Hurry back to Currie County. Connie and Skip, congratulations.
Yeah.
Best of the West.
Thank you, and you guys have a great rest of the week.
If we could figure out a way to bottle some of that energy, it would be something.
We need Eric again now.
Okay, let's just do that. We've got a ten oh five, we'll go to a break till ten.
Might lose them again. Let me see if they're possibly on there.
Well, we got a break, though.
Yeah, okay.
Ten oh five to, it has to be fifteen minutes? JJ?
I have no idea.
Well, ten oh five to-
Though we lost the owner again.
Ten oh five to ten twenty.
Ten twenty.
Yep. Be back at ten twenty. Thank you.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there, and how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression, and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So, looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So, this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So, my name is Murph George Jr., and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County-
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District III in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires, specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand of all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart, because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water, because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans, because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could hear. He and I stood on the riverbank, bracing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers, because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways. Keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Priest, Executive Director at CIS, and I really enjoy coming every year to this conference, because CIS, we are all about counties. We are owned by counties. We were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking. I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations, that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job. It actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity, and you know, in commissioning, in Deschutes County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office, and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon, and I love the residents of eastern Oregon. The architect of our first house actually had Doris Day as a dear friend and a client, and he would bring Doris Day up the mountains in Malibu to our house as it was being built.
This is my fourth conference at AOC. My favorite part is the fellowship with other commissioners and coming up with solutions with common situations and with commissioners from around the state to best serve our people. My favorite part about being a commissioner in Josephine County is the people that we work with. We live in the most beautiful place, but we have the most beautiful people. They are talented, artistic, caring. We have such a high level of philanthropy and just caring for our fellow citizens, and it's the best place in all of Oregon.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Martha Schrader from Clackamas County, Oregon. I'm the current president of the Association of Oregon Counties. Oh my goodness, I've been president for one year, but I've been a member of the Association of Oregon Counties since 2003. So, one of the reasons I really wanted to be president, and I've enjoyed it so much, is because I get to know everybody across the state, all the commissioners, and I've been from one end of the state to the other, visiting with them, talking with them, and really getting an idea of how we differ, but more importantly, what our similarities are and what we can do with one another to move forward with good county government.
I've been coming to AOC now for four years. My favorite part of serving as commissioner is trying to bring positive effects for our community.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Brennan, doggone, we lost your boss twice now, but we want to build that relationship with your company and, or keep building that relationship, and just have tremendous appreciation for the reputation you have around Oregon. I mentioned that at the last meeting. The, can you hear me now? Oops.
I can hear you.
So, we have, you have 110 employees, and you know, we have a piece of property on Ridge Creek, and it's up on the mountains between the Elk and the Sixes River, and I've seen Lone Rock had about 100 acres adjacent to our 38 acres and one on the south and the north, owned by the Kokil tribe, and we're having a presentation on that later on today. But you've been incredibly patient, and we've been anxious to get you and your company before our board and before the public, and we, yeah, we had about 12 public comments today, and we normally get about two or three, so we followed our agenda, and again, we're sorry we lost Mr. Luther, but welcome. Thank you, Brennan.
Well, and thank you very much. Yeah, Toby sends his regrets for not being able to attend, but we also fully understand how I believe in the public process, and that's just kind of the way it goes. So, we're fine, no harm, no foul, and you know, I'll run you through, if you can see my presentation here, just a real quick introduction of what our company is, and then, you know, if there's any follow-up questions that you want to discuss with us, by all means. But this is meant to just be an introduction, and you know, we have owned land in Curry County for quite some time, but more recently had an acquisition of the Allopiers family ownership that really increased our footprint, and we recognize with that came a need to introduce ourselves and form a more solid relationship with the county. So, without further ado, I'll step into, run this, yep, seeing the screen change. So, you know, a little bit about our history. Fred and Francis Stone were the original founders of our company back in 1950, when they bought a small sawmill on the banks of the South Humpbog River here in Roseburg. Fred was a very ingenuated man with a drive to always be improving, and under his leadership, some studs, the name of his mill, was one of the first mills in the world to implement laser technology that was used to better economize log recovery, and frankly, this is something we're still proud of today, because this is, this technology is still the backbone of technology used in nearly every mill in the world now. And that ingenuity, that spirit of ingenuity, is something that we, Lone Rock, although we don't own a mill any longer, are still very proud of and still take very seriously today. So, you know, recognizing the need for sustainable log supply, we started acquiring small bits of timberland here and there, but in 2001, we sold the mill to Swanson Group, who owns other mills and is primarily in the milling business, manufacturing business, and really increased our purchase of timberlands, which have been a part of our history, but we fully shifted to that part of our investment portfolio at that time. Today, our core business is owning and managing timberland in southwest Oregon, and we still get asked pretty regularly if the Stones aren't involved in what we do, and yes, absolutely, 100%. And the, but the company did undergo a management transition back in 2008, as the brothers, Rick and Howard Stone, retired from day-to-day operations and shifted control to the first non-family member, who was Toby and the rest of our management team, to run their company for the future. The entire Stone family, which is now on generation three, are still extremely committed to the family, to the company, and the communities that we have our employees, and frankly, many of, we still see some family members here and there. Many of our employees know who they are, and we're proud to work for family-owned companies. It's one of the core values of our company. Moving on to who we are today. So, today, we manage approximately 151,000 acres in southwest Oregon that stretch across six southwest counties. We own and manage land from the California border, north to, from the Caspades, west of the Pacific Ocean. To better serve our land and our communities, we have three office locations. Our primary headquarters here in Roseburg, where I'm based, we have an office in White City, near Medford, for our Medford, our southern timberlands, and we have an office in River Point to manage our coastal timberlands. We're unique among timber management companies in that we're vertically integrated on the operations side rather than on the manufacturing side. Lone Rock Logging is an all-encompassing forest work contractor, which includes logging, cutting, road construction, trucking, and a mechanic shop. In addition to some of the duties I have for policy work, I also manage Lone Rock Logging. And Lone Rock Logging Company does the majority of the work on our timberlands throughout our ownership, but we also use a variety of local contractors, many of whom have worked for us for decades on our timberlands. You know, and the other thing we do, firefighting, I know that's a concern of all of us in southwest Oregon, and when called upon, our company works side-by-side with Oregon Department of Forestry during the summer months to fight wildfires, and our foresters sit on regional and state-level fire committees and boards, including Coos Forest Protective Association. Currently, one of our foresters, who is out of our River Point office, is the vice president for CFDA. So, something we're also very proud of is that we've been ranked in the top 100 best companies to work for by Oregon Business Magazine several times, including being ranked number 12 in 2021. And in 2020, we were selected by The Oregonian as the number-two mid-size company to work for in all of Oregon and southwest Washington. We take a lot of pride in the hiring and keeping great employees, and we're blessed to have a very dedicated group and a nice mix of long-term employees who've been with the company, in some cases, 30 to 40 years, also young, very driven employees that push and challenge us to just get better and be constantly working. And, let's see, so, moving on to where we are in your neck of the woods. So in late 2020, actually, while we were fighting the Archie Creek fire here east of Roseburg, we were also working diligently to try and secure a purchase of the Allopiers lands that I, family-owned lands that I mentioned earlier, and this really increased our footprint in Gray County. Today, we manage about 10,800 acres in Gray County, and as you see from the map, they're mostly in the northern portion of the county, northeast portion of the county, and we also have some ownership near the Sixes and East Fork, and a small footprint down by the Rogue River basin as well. One other thing, so, in 2009, we invested in several different businesses, just to ensure that we have a good portfolio, including some investments in commercial real estate coming out of the Great Recession, and some natural gas in Calgary, Canada. More locally, we have controlling interests in Northwest Wine Company in Dundee, Oregon, as well as Abby's Pizza, which I believe you have there in Brookings.
No.
You have a store, but those, that's owned by the Lone Rock Resources Company as one of our, one of our many interests. So, for those of you actually unfamiliar with Abby's and how big it is, it actually has 36 stores, and three stores in Washington, three in Oregon, and a lot of very rural communities, as well as big urban zippers, too. But we're excited to be a part of Abby's, and the Lone Rock family feels it's actually a great, a great fit, and it was a family-owned business, and it still remains there today. And as just a sign, Abby's Pizza was also selected for a top 100 business companies to work for in 2020, so we're excited to continue that tradition. And, but, one thing that kind of surprises people is, hey, you're making all these investments in non-natural resources, what, you know, what does that mean? But it's, so it's important that we take a moment anytime we talk about our diversification efforts to talk about that timber internally still remains our core asset and our core business practice. We look to these other diversification efforts to just help balance us when there's a talent take in timber, and we'll continue to look outside of timber, but it's still, despite that... but it's still, despite that need to look out outward, outside of timber, we have also grown our timberland management by almost fifty percent in the last ten years. So you know, where, where it matters, we are a timber-based company. And with that, I'll, I'll conclude and offer up an opportunity for any questions. I want to take time for, thank, well, I want to thank you all very much for taking the time to meet with us and also allow us to introduce ourselves. We believe in being part of the communities that we operate in. And with the addition of the Al Pierce lands, we have significant very county holdings and feel that it's important for us to be plugged in and also have that relationship that if concerns arise, that you feel comfortable to reach out to us and have a one-on-one conversation with either myself or Toby. And though we have some rather busy schedules right now, we would like to schedule a time likely in the March or the spring to come down there and offer up an opportunity to go visit our timberlands and see what we're up to. So again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
No questions here.
I have none. So Mr. Gerrold, you mentioned firefighting as a priority and of course, we, we love hearing that after the Klondike and the Chekko Bar fires in two thousand seventeen and eighteen. You mentioned your Archie Creek Fire and then your relationship with CUS Forest Protective. No surprise, but great to hear. That's part of Oregon that, you know, the, the level of risk that we have in this state, we knew before the seventeen fire and especially the, after the twenty-twenty season. So protecting our resources and our watershed, our timber, private, public lands, all the above, you know, the tradition that your company offers and brings to the table. Glad to have, glad to hear that you have representation on CFPA. And in the five years I've been here, the, just watching what happens with Oregon Department of Forestry, the work that they do, couldn't give them higher marks, especially on the firefighting portion. You mentioned foresters in your company. Growing up here, you know, as a kid, you wanted to be a forester, you know, or a firefighter. And so those two go hand in hand again in protecting, protecting those resources. And that has to do with our, our fish, everything, especially in Curry County where we, we proudly go by the Wild Rivers Coast, you know, our rivers are so special and pristine here. So I'll get over to Myrtle Point and see your rep there. And I, I forgot that you had an office there, but I'm glad that that person serves on the board. And you know, it's, it's a, it's just the support of what you're doing around southwest Oregon. You mentioned six counties. And yeah, just elaborate some additional if you, if you like there.
You don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to look for words.
Looks painful.
My, I, I would love to elaborate, but I could occupy the next three hours, like we, on logging, on all those topics that we touched on. You know, one, I will share that with our ownership patterns, the company with, in terms of acquisitions of land, our company was about late to the game relative to, you know, the big names like Roseburg and Warehouser. So our ownership pattern is kind of like the O and C checkerboard. It's very shotgun across the map with, you know, forty acres here and five thousand acres here. And kind of the struggles for me, but the benefits for CFPA and ODF and the like is that when a fire pops up, we generally show up because we are, it's either burning on us or it's threatening us. You know, whereas some of the other large owners who have large block ownership, which would be a dream to manage under, it, they, they may not show up if it's too far away, right? And so we have over thirty trained local resource loss staff that can go out and put on the yellow shirt and the ugly green pants and fight fire right next to them, just like you, you wouldn't notice even the difference among them. And one of the other benefits of having our own logging company and both being the fire guy for the company and the logging manager is that when that fire pops up, we generally hold, stop operations and head that way to one, either coordinate with ODF or engage with equipment and resources. Because like you said, the impacts, the fire, from fire in today's world that we live in, they're devastating. Not just to the asset value of the timberlands that get burned up, but downstream effects are huge, right? I really believe in those, when those conditions are ripe for wildfire, we got to put it out. But I also support an active, we also support a very active management and active permitting program when the conditions, when we can't, if our, our control the outcomes, it does make for a safer, healthier landscape. So I'll, I'll choose that as my one monologue is the focus on fire, fire prevent, prevention and suppression in the world we live in today.
You know, we've also worked non-stop with the Forest Service, US Forest Service, because relations were not good just prior to, during, and immediately after the Chekko Bar Fire in particular. And so there's a new attitude that I'm happy to report and we have continual or consistent meetings to bring everybody together to prepare for and to understand catastrophic fires. So thanks for your part in that. I want to congratulate you on the acquisition of, you know, in, in the tradition of Al Pierce, wasn't really a warehouser or Georgia Pacific kind of company. I mean, that was a family-owned program too. And put in a good word for us. We're, we're going to be applying to them for some foundation grants as they've transitioned into a new, a new community service and Judge, retired Judge Barron from Cus County is taking the lead on that. And so I, I, I just see some really, the potential for some really good things there. So.
That's great to hear.
Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your.
Be safe.
I assume you're a Beaver fan, huh?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That's why I hate those yellow and green fire quotes.
All right. Well.
We'll look forward to seeing you in the spring, okay?
All right, I'll be in touch. And like I said, and generally any, any concerns, even questions, no matter how simple, don't hesitate to reach out directly to me. Like I am, I'm applying somebody with Cam. So thank you much for your time and good luck to you for the rest of the day.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again for your patience. Bye for now. We'll be contacting you.
Melvin Trover, come on up. You're the next contestant.
If I could interrupt for just a second. We also have as G, rather than have Mel come back later this afternoon, that'll just be a brief thing. County Council's online, maybe we could talk about that as well.
Eight, seven G or eight, six G?
Seven, seven G is a clarification of absentee property.
Okay, yeah, let's do them both. Yep.
Sounds good to me.
So you're going to give us an update on the presentation part and then, yeah. So the floor is yours, sir.
All right. First off, I'd like to introduce myself to the commissioners and to the Curry County public. My name is Melvin Trover. I'm the new Curry County Code Enforcement Officer. A little quick background, I came back from the last three years of public works in the utility department, sewer, water, streets. Before that, I had five years of experience with animal control and four of that was running an animal shelter in a high, a high-kill shelter area that I made as a no-kill before I left there. So that's the quick rundown.
And you had some big shoes to fill in this position.
Yes.
The previous?
The pre, previous to code enforcement officers. Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, okay, just.
I'll leave it at that.
All right.
So it's going to be a challenging course. I did make a little quick outline of some stuff I've noticed. I've only been here a month and six days. So when I took this position, I knew very little about the inner workings of it. I, I knew some of it from past code enforcement officers, but one thing we had was a program called GovPilot. And I started digging into that a little bit to find out what our stats and stuff were. But I noticed since September two thousand twenty, we went to the program, we started using it. And then since then, we've had two thousand four hundred and sixty-three total cases that's been into the program that code enforcement has done something with. Maybe not going out in the field, but they have had, spent time on it. And out of that, one thousand twenty of them closed already that we've had resolutions with it. So we decided that they were done or recited or the problem was fixed. Right now, we have two hundred and sixty-seven open cases that are new since September twenty twenty. So September twenty twenty, we're still working on two hundred and sixty-seven. That's not been open since, since it just opened, maybe two days ago that was open and we're in the progress, progress of working that case. Out of all, out of the twenty-four hundred and sixty-three cases, forty-three of them were consolidated. So maybe we get three calls on one property, we put them all together. So when the program started in GovPilot, they moved over eleven hundred and thirty-three old cases from GovPilot. It was probably a little bit more than that, but right now we still have the eleven hundred and thirty-three that are considered open. We're going back through them. Not for sure, because a lot of them are just RV on property. That's all we have. So we're not going to act on it. We close it out. But if it's in detail, we investigate it, make sure it's something we don't want to have somebody come back and go, well, I called this in a year and a half ago, why hasn't it been cleared? Or two years ago. Right now, code enforcement's working on four major properties. I'm just going to name the properties. The Winchuck Airport, Orford School that I've heard a lot about today.
Orford School, yeah.
And Waterburn Loop. That's been something that was been brought up.
Yep.
Again. So without going into detail, that's the four major properties we're working on. Some of the things that we need to work on in code enforcement is policy for steps for nuisance properties like these four properties. So far, I haven't found an outline of how when we go out there, we give them a warning, we give them thirty days to clean it up, they don't. We get a citation to them. After that, we take them to court. It's really not defined, something I got to get with Anthony Pope, legal counsel and work on. I've already talked to him about it. One other thing that came to my knowledge is vacant vehicles. We've talked about it. I've heard it in here before from you guys past commissioner meetings. Vehicles on roadways, what's our responsibility? What's the property owners? And private property vehicles, they're camping on private property. Who's responsibility? I know, I, I know I can go out and cite, cite them, but is that the best policy right now for us as a community? It's stuff that I need to work with you guys, plus Anthony Pope, legal counsel. And last that, it's been brought to my attention and part of my animal control was high call volume, high rate of crime in some areas of southeast Texas. We do twenty, thirty animal control calls a day. High crime, but we always had that protection, that right hand, if we needed something, we'd call, a police officer was there within a minute or less. I noticed here, and at first I didn't really notice it, but now after it's been brought to my attention, we could be up in the sixes talking to somebody and we need help. They, all the deputies might, could be in, in Brookings doing a domestic call. We have no help. So it's something that, something we need to look into officer safety for myself and the other code enforcement officer. I've touched base with my, my past, the liaisons for us and something that we need to work on a little bit more, I think, just to figure out another safety cushion for us out there in the field when we know we don't have that help.
Yeah.
That's all I have right now for this. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mel?
I, I would just like to let the board know, you know, that Mr. Trover and I have spoken on several occasions and, and I do feel that we need to address the safety situation. As you know, we are limited in our, in our resources for law enforcement. We're trying to work with relationships with the cities, you know, at least if he's in the sixes, maybe he could call Port Orford and get some kind of support there. But we are going to have to work with something to give, give them some sort of support, whether that be something that they carry on their physical person or, you know, finding a way to have a, have a deputy go with them. These are things that we're going to have to talk about in the very near future. I will say that I do believe that we are going to have to grow code enforcement. I mean, as you can hear, the hundreds and even thousands of cases that there are in a small county like ours. I, I believe that code enforcement is something that we're going to have to look at down the road to find funding for, which we can talk about at a, at a later workshop because Mr. Trover and I have spoken about a few things that we could use to raise funds for that. So that's, that's all I have.
Court, any questions for?
No. Good job.
I do have one other thing I need to kind of add.
You know, we haven't had a chance to introduce you to the public yet.
Yeah.
And so I think this board is very supportive, has been very supportive on the whole code enforcement concept and project and, and footprint. So here we are, three years after, four years after getting it established and just really glad to have you here and very important work you're doing. And yes, safety is absolutely everything. So thanks. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You bet.
And I have one thing kind of going on the numbers that I didn't add.
Okay.
When I interviewed for this job, the one thing I was told multiple times is follow-through. And that's why we're opening these old cases back up. And with the workload, it's no, it's not from our old code enforcement officers. They were overwhelmed with work. But one thing I noticed is, I'm working a case right now, it was open April, middle of April, that I'll probably be issuing citations for this coming week or next week. But that, them cases pop up all the time right now because we haven't addressed them. So that's something I want to make sure I tell the public that. You might have complained, might not be there right now, but I will be there eventually, me or my deputy.
We haven't forgotten you.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten you. We'll be there and we'll, we'll take our actions, what we need to do.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So let's just jump right into seven G, verification of absentee property owner program.
Yeah. And what we did, County Counsel, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Because I know you, you and Mr. Trover had spoken about this and, and we had spoken about it prior to this. So I think we wanted to clarify mostly the, the language and, and what we can and can't do on this.
Yeah, that's correct. I think the biggest issue is that, you know, property owners that own multiple properties, I was just going to charge them one fee for all their properties or we're going to split it up or give them a reduced fee for a second-tier property or.
And you're going to give us a recommendation, Melvin?
Well, yeah.
How come you laughed, Anthony?
Go ahead.
You want to go first, Anthony?
Yeah, from the legal side, I mean, I don't really have a recommendation on how you guys want to split, um, from, around my job. We probably wouldn't need that big order, but it would, it would help things do. So I guess whatever you guys try to do, I'll take that direction and we can get things going from there.
Okay.
All right. Some things I note, I went back in the minutes and watched a couple commissioners' meetings on this. One thing I noticed every, was an agreement of if a property is conjoined by five tax lots, but they're all together, it'd be one fee. The big question that I noticed was if somebody owned a property in the sixes, Port Orford and Brookings, would it be a discounted fee for all three or one, the one-twenty for each property? Myself, I think it should just be one-twenty for each property you have unless they're conjoining. We're only there for the one big tax lot together. I'm not for sure how you guys feel about that. And then that was the reason why it was brought down from Dave Fortman and was going to bring back to, but I think after the new officer came in and just didn't get back to you guys. Now, I think that was the big question. I do have a couple more, but after that, we can talk about that.
Okay. Well, gentlemen.
I think our, I, I thought our agreement was that they would be all one, that they would all be the same fee. That's what I thought.
Except for the?
Except for the, yeah, any properties that are defined as one property, but there's several tax lots, yes.
I'm, I think that, we are in favor of that at one time. I guess maybe it never got voted on.
I think it was a workshop. I think it was a workshop.
Okay.
And it never came back as a vote.
Well, this is a chance for us to vote on it and get it, the ordinance changed, and if we're in agreement.
I just have a little clarification there that, as you well pointed out, the, uh, if it was in different sections of the county, there should be some kind of a discount. If they're all yes right together, uh, I'm okay with that. But if they're, you know, charging 120 five times in different areas of the county, I think, I think we should have some, uh, recognition of the property owners that, hey, you know, we'll, we'll try and save you a little money here, and we understand, um, you know, they get hit pretty hard at tax time.
Yes, for sure.
So that's, that's my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
So Mel, what, 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 you know, what physical thing do you do on those properties?
Um, really, it's more of, and this is all new to me, I mean, I didn't know this till about three weeks ago when I got an email on it. So I, I didn't even know we had it till then.
Okay.
Um, my thinking and my knowledge of it so far is it's, when we go to a property and it's not, the owner doesn't live there, and it's not managed by a managed company, we, if something's going on at a property, we need to know where the owner is. So that's why this, pretty sure this is why this was organized. So I can go in the computer, look it up in the field, and go, okay, it's owned by Bob Jones. I give them a call and go, hey, your renters, or you got vehicles on the property, we need to take care of it. Um, so, and I know certain properties don't get, they're immune to this, uh, registration because they work for the Sheriff's Department already, like a lot of the lumber companies. So, I mean, I feel like it's one property, it's a single property, but I understand, Commissioner Boyce, you know, if you own 20 properties, that's a, individual properties, that's a lot of properties to be paying for, you know, so, um, I can see it both ways.
Okay, well, we got to make a decision, gentlemen.
Well, how about I make a motion? That we, um, let the fee remain for each property, um, for the, uh, it's $125, correct?
It's 120.
$120 for each of vacant property in the, in the county, and anything that is, um, under one property owner but has multiple tax lots in the same grouping, um, it is only one fee.
The word there might be, correct me if I'm wrong, might be contiguous.
Continuous, yeah, each together.
Yeah, they would have one fee, and if they don't, uh, then we could give, are you favor, in favor of a discount maybe? Okay, so you're making a motion, because I will.
It's my motion.
I will oppose that then, unless we can offer, as you just said, 20 different properties.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Question now, yeah, what, now discussion?
Well, I, you know, I've already said my part as far as a recommendation board, that we look at some sort of a discount, uh, send a good message, you know, and you had, you asked a good question, uh, what do they get for that? You know, I don't know, we've tried to clarify and justify why we would charge these, uh, these fees, and I don't know if we've done a good job of that. I, I don't think I have. Um, and so that's, that's my, so that's why I will oppose it, uh, based on hitting them too hard. It's my opinion.
I, I think we will, uh, hear from the public if it's too hard. Um, so for right now, I will, I will, I second to that, I'll ask if all the questions are out, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries two to zero.
Two to one.
Two to one, sorry.
Now, since that's being said, I do have one other question.
Okay.
When they, uh, when Dave Fortman came to you guys last year, and it was told in the workshop, needed to go redo it and bring it back to you guys?
Yep.
They put it on hold. I'm not for sure the individual that put it on hold, but on our website, it says it's on hold. When do we start this back up? Do we start it up ASAP?
County Council? That's a question for County, uh, Council Pope.
Yeah, um, I think we obviously would want to make the changes to the, uh, the ordinance first, but if I could have that ready, uh, you know, for the next meeting, we could also play, pass out an emergency, so it don't go away to 90 days, like to be enacted. Um, but yeah, I think we should send it out as soon as possible, because I think that's significant, you know, revenue fund that we're, we're missing out on right now. So I'll try to get an ordinance, uh, right up and submitted for the, the next meeting, and I think once that's passed, we can, you know, start collecting again.
Okay, because my biggest question was, it, it goes from July to July, so we're already oh, ha- halfway through this fiscal year, so it's gonna, I probably won't hear that much guff about it, but my admin Barbara will hear tons of it, so.
Well, we want to, we want to hear that.
Okay.
Yeah, we want you to track that if you could.
Of course, you're only going to hear the no's, not the, that's a bad idea.
Right.
And like I said, we haven't collected except, I think, $480 this year. That was just because the check got processed.
Okay.
Um, other than that, we have zero money in that fund right now.
All right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Melvin.
That's it, thank you.
Be safe.
So we are ready to vote on consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda?
One minute, please.
Okay.
Well, the only thing, uh, was item 6D, uh, Staff Jesuit corrected that, uh, to add the new person, it wasn't Leon, Leo Uphill.
Okay.
So, uh, we're good there, so I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
It moved to second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries three to zero, consent agenda is moved forward. Seven, 7A, discussion slash action items, Roadmaster signature authority. Okay?
I was going to recommend that you be next.
Well, I, I have to go, and I'm, I'm super sorry, um, but at the state level, I was just appointed to the victim's, uh, crime system on a subcommittee, and it starts at 11 in its introductions. I don't know if I can be put somewhere, if this is self-explanatory, but I really don't want to miss out on that meeting.
No, I don't want you to, so.
Okay, so this is for you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
You can maybe just email me what you need me to do, if you need me to come back over or whatever.
No, you're fine.
I apologize.
You're fine.
You'll be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rich. Hi, Garrett.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners, Richard Christensen, Curry County Road Department. This has to do, uh, with the request for Roadmaster signature authority to sign amended agreement with US Forest Service. We already have an agreement with them for chip sealing the 17 miles of Bearcamp Road, but, uh, they requested the railroad department fill out all their federal paperwork, progress reports for that project, and I said, uh, no, that I was still dealing with a lot of federal paperwork from our past FEMA projects, I wasn't, my team wasn't able to take on more work. And so they agreed that they'd fill out all the quarterly reports, and all I'd have to do is sign them. So I'm asking for your approval that I could sign these, uh, quarterly reports for this $700,000 project.
Still moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
But moved in second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
You have that authority now, do you have something else on?
Yeah, it's down on the end, it was with Planning Department, but it's with Garrett, and so we can wait.
Okay, well, because Wendy just, um, bypassed her 7B, so we could move I to?
Do we need her to, uh, to, to be here to approve that, though? That's just for, uh, it's grant approval, that's all we're doing.
I think we can just, we can just do it, we can, we can, we can approve B and C together, Colvin Building IT upgrades, and the, uh, grant approval?
Still moved, Mr. Chair?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve, uh, discussion action items B and C?
Good.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. We're moving right along here. D is Curry County a pledge of support for the Oregon Trail completion? Commissioner Boyce is on that list.
Uh, just to let the board know, this is, uh, this is part of our visitor promotion efforts, uh, Oregon Coast Visitors Association, Travel Oregon, uh, Travel Southern Oregon Coast, um, some really good people. AOC has stepped up considerably here on this whole project, and, uh, I want the board to know this doesn't, uh, obligate us for any funding or anything like that. We could do that if, uh, and when those opportunities come up. But it's basically just to say we would work with the property owners for easement, or we would help any way that we possibly could. It just doesn't commit us, um, you know, if, if Council Pope is still on, in any way that would, uh, I would suggest would make the board, uh, uneasy. So we're, we're just proud of this project, and it's, uh, it's going to be a hiking trail, still about two years out. Been working with Keith, uh, Tim Chuck is a leader, uh, in, uh, from Reedport, and, uh, you know, it's got some Walt Schroder, uh, portions to it, uh, just some really good, hardworking people, and so we're excited about that, and, uh, of course, we argued that the best part of the entire Oregon Coast Trail is from, uh, Port Orford to, uh, to Cape Ferrell. So I'd like to have the board's support on this.
Chris?
I actually, it's one of the, this is the first thing that I ever got involved with, when I moved here, when Bonnie and I moved here, that I publicly got involved in, and that's actually when I met Commissioner Boyce, because he was heading up the meeting that I went to. So I, I support getting this trail completed.
Okay. Well, I'm a huge proponent of this. I, in my, in my younger years, was a runner, and ran a few marathons, and we used to train on the coast trail from Huskunaga and down, we'd run from Huskunaga and clear to Cape Ferrell, Lone Ranch, and, and, uh, just a beautiful, beautiful trail, and, and there's a, there are gentlemen, um, that works on it, the retired gentleman from the Good Samaritan Society in Brookings, that just, I mean, there's been so many people that work on this tirelessly, without any, they're just, they, if, if you, if you get on that trail, there's some part of it that'll, uh, just grab you and say, you just want to work on it. So I'm in complete, uh, favor of, um, what's the wording?
Support.
Support of, of this, so, is it in the motion? Motion to second?
Still moved, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
It's a great day.
Yeah. Pledge of support. E is Curry County Presentation Update from Steve Byerlin, Curry Salmon Recovery.
He's not here.
Mr. Chair, if I?
Leonard's here, though, I saw, yeah.
If I may, uh, Mr. Her, Mr. Byerlin, uh, unlike him, is a little bit under the weather today, and, uh, but he's still working, uh, no surprise, and, uh, uh, we, we, we always welcome, uh, Leonard Krug to come and, uh, join in with him or talk in addition to him, so, welcome. Good to have you here.
Court asked me if I could just give you an update?
Okay, can you, can you get behind the pulpit there?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
We're comfortable up here.
I know, Leonard.
I know you are.
Everybody else wants to hear.
Pull that right, mo, microphone down just a little bit. Thank you.
Please come out.
Yeah.
Now I got it.
Yeah.
All right, if you don't mind, I'll just read this, uh, it's maybe three to four minutes is all, and that'll probably fill it in, it's easier than, maybe I won't have as many ums and ahs that way, but, titled, Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission adopts conservation plan for southwest Oregon's inland fisheries. The Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission voted unanimously to adopt a fisheries conservation plan that has been over two years in the making. The plan's geographic scope includes Curry, Jackson, and Josephine Counties. And just a few of the many highlights in the plan include the creation of the largest wild fish emphasis area south of the Canadian border. Our south coast streams now, and this with the exception of the Rogue, our south coast streams now are almost exclusively set aside for fish of natural origin. And any increase to hatchery production will require commission approval. Uh, number two, additional conservation safeguards have been implemented to further ensure that species will not suffer excessive harvest from recreational angling. Extensive additional monitoring monies and resources with annual assessments and reporting have been included. Number three, a slight increase from 50,000 to 75,000 hatchery co-hosts molt will be released into the Rogue River annually. And number four, the continued harvest for wild winter steelhead, but at a reduced catch limit from one per day and five total per year, down to one per day with a total of three per year. Now, along this, there will be additional license fees charged for anglers that elect to fish for winter steelhead in this zone, and the monies derived from additional license fees will be directly applied to the monitoring of winter steelhead in this zone. This will likely motivate other areas in Oregon to again allow a sustainable harvest of wild steelhead where populations allow. This plan's being touted as the most comprehensive and conservative plan ever created. A work group that combined both ODFW staff and stakeholders resulted in over 40 members to craft a very detailed and complex plan. Even more challenging was the requirement to conduct almost all of the meetings by teleconference. Even though the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission voted unanimously to adopt the plan, there was a separate vote proposed and cast to decide whether or not to continue the harvest of unmarked winter steelhead as proposed in this plan. So the commission voted five to two in favor of allowing continued harvest of wild winter steelhead, and interestingly enough, Congressional District Four Representative and Chair, Commissioner Mary Wall from Langloes, and Portland resident west of the Cascades, Commissioner Kathy Unkalil were the two that opposed ODFW staff and stakeholders' recommendation to continue harvest. The plan's adoption has brought some of the most contentious national opinion from groups opposing hatcheries and harvest of wild fish, as well as perhaps the most public testimony ever offered on a single subject. Common opinion is that public testimony that was made possible by the Curry County Commissioner and the, or, excuse me, Curry County Commission and the Oregon Anglers Alliance, combined with their ability to offer a live remote teleconference link to the state commission meeting in Salem, is what gave the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission the confidence that it needed to wholly adopt this plan. The Oregon Anglers Alliance and Curry County were able to offer well over 50 testimonies from people within the south coast community and demonstrate the importance of adopting this plan as it was written. The two common messages from local anglers, businesses, and concerned citizens were that, one, ODFW expert opinion and data illustrate that sport fishing has no effect on the viability of these fish, and that harvest opportunity is vital to our south coast community's fragile winter economy and the continued well-being of our culture. Without this harvest opportunity, many hotels, restaurants, tackle shops, guides, boat manufacturers, et cetera, would forfeit many tourist dollars. And finally, a small but yet another win for our south coast communities to celebrate is the addition of the month of December to the Rogue River for the harvest of non-clipped winter steelhead. The previous regulations did not allow harvest until January 1st. So I'd like you to thank you for your concern about our fisheries here, our economy, and our community's well-being.
Thank you, Leonard. Any questions for Mr. Krug?
For that setting up the meeting, you and Staff Jesuit get the credit. We'll pull that off in like 24 hours, so.
Yes, thank you, John.
So is this need to be in the form of emotions of support for this, or?
No, it's all done.
Okay, it's a, it's a done deal, it's just a, okay.
Yes, thank you for your support.
We're going to bring you back in a couple months, and we'll, we'll, uh, get you and, uh, Steve Byerlin to team up again. Thanks for all the work.
Steve's got a lot of great information, uh, Rogue River centric mostly, but he's got a lot of, a lot of that stuff in his head, so thank you. We'll see you again.
Thank you, bud.
Appreciate to have you here, Leonard, thank you.
Curry County approved $25,000 from the American Rescue Plan Funds for long-term water needs planning, Commissioner Boyce.
Do you want to let, uh, Roadmaster Christian and, uh?
Sure. Do that, do that at the end, yeah, we could do H and I.
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Who, who else are we maybe overlooking?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah, we got a public hearing, so we're.
So I'll go last, yeah.
We're doing great.
What time's the public hearing at?
Well, it just, Anthony, Anthony, is there a, a specific time I have to read that thing about the public hearing?
No, we, we do have a specific time, we probably have a public hearing.
Yeah, I thought they always have to have a time on them, too.
Should we, should we set a time now, Mr. Chair?
I, I'll read it at 11:30.
Great. Just in case somebody's listening and wants to, that gets us, keeps us in the legal process there.
Is that okay, Anthony?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, 11:30, somebody remind me, please, JJ?
I'll remind you.
Okay. Sorry, Rich?
Good morning, Board. Richard Christiansen, Curry County Road Department. Becky, Planning Director Becky Crockett couldn't be here today. She asked Garrett and I to help with items, uh, H and I, and maybe we just do them both at one time here real quick. And so, basically, uh, we're asking for board support to hire, uh, move forward forest management and hiring a forester. And also, we have a conceptual drawing completed by Dyer Partnership on, uh, layout for past, uh, workshops and board meetings. And it's just conceptual right now, but it's just for you to look at conceptionally for us to move forward with the forest management. And that will have future workshops on what the actual, uh, schematic will be or the layout will be with, with the uses. But right now, we'd like to continue moving forward with, uh, our forester.
Court, so, um, you know, I've been pushing for a Curry Forestry Department for a long time. Are you thinking that would be under the Road Department?
No.
No? Nice try. Nice try, boys. Okay.
Nice try.
You got, you got my interest going there.
You know, between, uh, the Planning Director Becky and, and building, uh, official Garrett and I, we wanna work together and try to make things happen with forestry management and using those funds for trying to make housing projects for low-income housing or veteran-type housing. And that's part of this conceptual drawing that you see here. And so, that's what our goal is. And, you know, the Road Department's been trying to find a home here for two years for all our materials. And so, in this conceptual drawing, you'll see that as well. Plus coastal bike route, backpacking camping, a, a, a trailer park, that could be like maybe half veterans, half tourists. And it, it's a pretty nice layout. And a staging area in case we ever have a Cascadia event where, uh, the airport and, uh, becomes in play. And so, when materials are delivered, we're able to have a place to stage them to disperse to Coos County and Curry County. So, thank you.
Okay, so that's discussion action item H. So, I looked for both of them. That's, okay?
H and I, we're gonna-
H and I, together we'll, we'll, uh, go ahead, Court.
So, so we are talking about our thirty-four acres. We have different names for it, right?
Yes, but I think we're also talking about the forestry management of the other, I think it's forty acres up in-
Grassy Knob area?
Grassy Knob.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine acres, I think. Becky was in yesterday and talked to me about it.
Yeah, so we're talking about forest management of everything.
Well, I'm, I'm thrilled.
Not to exceed five thousand.
I'm ab- absolutely thrilled. Uh, I've been up to that, uh, plot, that, uh, plot of forest and, uh, it's pretty impressive when you look at the map. By the way, the map that, uh, Mr. Nichols had was, uh, a satellite photo taken before the Coquille Tribe logged on both sides, both the east, excuse me, south and the north of our thirty-eight acres there. Um, but it's pretty impressive country. And then Lone Rock, Roseburg Lumber has, uh, property around there as well. I don't know if you heard the presentation from, uh, Lone Rock, but they have eleven thousand acres. I meant to, and I'll, and I'll do that through email, but just to see how they might be able to help us on the thirty-eight acres. Uh, we might wanna sell it at some point. Uh, probably not. Uh, Director Crockett estimated, and I don't know if you followed this, but we have about eight hundred acres. I'm not sure what those total. I think it's more than that. I could be wrong. I hope it's more than that. Um, but it gives us enough of a basis to start our, our forestry department. And, um, when you look at, uh, Josephine County and Coos County, they both coincidentally have about seventeen or eighteen thousand acres. And they routinely harvest, uh, and just do an excellent job. I think one of them has three full-time employees. I think Joe County has, uh, two full-time employees. Um, so, uh, that's, yeah, if we're gonna vote on that separately, then, uh, you know, I, I wanna definitely move forward on this. I don't know if you're looking or when you're looking for a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm looking for a motion. We can just group H and I together as one motion if it pleases the board.
I'm fine with that.
To, uh, move ahead with-
Well, I wanna talk, I wanna talk about I separately from-
Okay.
From this, if we could. I, I have some questions.
To make a motion on H and-
If that's okay, I will. So, Mr. Chair, I make a, a motion, uh, that we hire next-generation forestry, uh, through, uh, it, it's a team effort with, uh, you know, Building, um, Director Thompson and Road Department and, uh, Planning Director Crockett. And I, I think that's just a heck of a team and I, I'd like to be involved in that. And, and I, I definitely would have some input, I think would be of value, I hope. So, uh, there's my motion, Mr. Chair. I'm really excited about this.
Second?
I'll second with discussion.
All right, discussion, ready for-
Well, I just wanna make sure we, uh, from what I was told by Ms. Crockett, um, there not to exceed five thousand is a commitment for H and I, not just H. So-
Okay.
This motion would, not to exceed, would cover both of those.
That's my understanding. That is accurate.
All right. But for H, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. I is, any questions or do I hear a motion on that? So, we can-
I'll make a motion.
In a second, then we can discuss that.
Let's just discuss it now. Conceptual plan for thirty-four acres.
I'll second that and we'll disc- and then we'll go to discussion. How's that? So, go ahead. You got a question?
So, what is the motion then, Mr. Chair?
To accept the conceptual plan, conceptual plan for the thirty-four acre Airport Road Project par- parcel with Becky Crockett, Special Projects.
Okay, thank you.
And Rich and Garrett can speak to that too. Um, that's the, that's the, as you turn off a one oh one on the Airport Road, the left side is the bigger parcel across the street on the, right directly across the street will be the RV Park and, uh, question?
Oh, thank you. Um, I gotta tell a quick story here. I was up there yesterday and I'm looking at the, uh, twenty-eight acres on the south. And I give some free wood to some people up there that really needed. It was in the back of my pickup. And, um, and I had a friend with me and I wanted to get his input on the twenty-eight acres, well, the whole, whole thing. And I showed him the map that, uh, Roadmaster Christiansen provided or you, you both provided. And so, we're just stopped there on Airport Road and we're facing the high school, probably a couple hundred yards back. And these people come up and they seen the wood in the back and they, they go, "Did you cut that wood in there? You're going to jail, man." And I had my tie on, so it was kind of a, it was kind of a fun thing. I said, "No, that wood came from Rogue River area." And, uh, so we introduced ourselves. But I think they might possibly be the ones that've been getting wood out of there. But, you know, I think Mr. Trover is well, uh, well up on that. So, Mr. Chair, all I had was, um, I also, uh, looked at the, uh, I don't have Roadmaster Christiansen, but I looked at the North County property, uh, Road Department property that's just across the street from this. And there's a lot of debris in there, uh, that they're, I'm sure, getting ready to burn. More activity in that piece of property than I've seen in a while, uh, which is good. Uh, you know, the usage on that is, is important. Um, you know, we're spending a lot of time in, uh, in North County and that's good. Uh, you know, the, the thing I wanted to ask Roadmaster Christiansen is, you know, would he look at a five-year agreement, uh, through, uh, through the county? Cause I don't know if, if he wants the Road Department to eventually own this property or, you know, he's, he's biting off a pretty big chunk of responsibility there too because of the wetlands, which is a very small part of it, of the, especially the, the south twenty-eight acres. Um, but I wonder what the board wants to do as far as, uh, uh, you know, ownership. Or is a county gonna maintain ownership? Uh, are we going to, go ahead and, and to what extent are we gonna follow through with the plan on the road building and the access and the staging area, the burning? Um, that's just twenty-eight acres of flat ground. And, uh, you know, originally we said, "Oh, no, there's a bunch of swampland there." And we traded it with the, with the Oregon Parks. And it's, you know, it's, it's a great piece of property. Very excited about the six or seven acres north and the RV Park. Um, and so, those are just the questions I have. I'm, I'm ready to vote in favor of this. I just, I, I don't wanna turn ownership of that property over yet outside of the county. So, I just wanna make sure that's the understanding. Thank you.
Garrett, can you speak to that? I, personally, I feel it's the county, it's the county's property.
So, I don't wanna speak for, for Rich, um, in definite terms, but my understanding is yes, you are correct that it would, uh, stay under the, the county and he would utilize the property for, um, uh, his, his needs. There was several things that he talked about, such as, uh, a lot of the ground up in, in the North County has gorse. And that's something he doesn't want to transport, you know, from one end of the county to the next. So, he would like to have an area there where he can dispose of it and burn it, um, up north without, without risking spread of that. Um, so, he, he definitely could utilize the space, um, from what he was telling me, uh, effectively and without necessarily needing to take it away from the county. Uh, and, and part of that land on the south side of Airport Road would be utilized as, um, the, the campground for the, uh, Oregon Coast Bike Route and such.
Yep.
By the way, there is no gorse in there. It's amazing.
Yes.
So, his, uh, you know, he's being on top of that and trying to prevent that is, i- i- in addition to burning. So, that, yeah, that's, we wanna keep it that way. We wanna keep it that way.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Chris?
Oh, sure.
So, we have a motion in a second to, uh, approve that conceptual plan. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. So, we are-
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Garrett.
Thanks, Garrett. We are back to Curry County approved twenty-five thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Funds for long-term water needs. This is probably going back to last meeting, the water folks.
Yeah, in the air, uh, gender outing slip, uh, Mr. Chair, Board, I, uh, included the resumes of the two people that we'll be working with. Um, you know, I, water is the hub for everything and especially in our county with the rivers we have and we, we highlight that often. But healthy drinking water for our kids, you know, industry, certainly housing, community needs, uh, always firefighting, not to mention agriculture. And so, this is, this is what? This is about one percent of our budget for the first year of our two-point-two million in, uh, American Rescue Plan Funds. Um, you got the presentation last week and I, I, I felt like that was, um, very helpful. And Curry County has a chance to lead here in that if we can get this done, uh, we'll have the attention of AOC, Association of Waring Counties. And, uh, they're only gonna do about six counties a, a year. Um, I know one commissioner in Hood River County says, you know, he started ten years ago and they're in a very good position now. Um, you know, we're, we know what happened at Winchuk. We know what's going on in Josephine County with illegal growth. They are using water illegally. They're contaminating our, our watersheds. Um, you know, I was at a meeting yesterday in Port Orford and, um, there's a chance for a first-class mobile home park for middle-income people, workforce housing, thirty-two units. And, uh, city of Port Orford is struggling to be able to, would be struggling to be able to provide water for the, this, uh, this project. Um, and it's, uh, there's just some very positive aspects of that, obviously. So, the planning that we could help Port Orford with through AOC and, uh, bringing all the stakeholders together, you know, I, other than firefighting and awareness, I just can't think, well, housing. But those are, as you've heard me say, those are, I think, the three main areas of focus I have to be on and I wanna encourage this board. Uh, and you can't do anything, uh, without water. So, why should counties take the leadership on water? Commissioners and planners need support and assistance to navigate the increasingly complex world of water. And I wanna just, uh, interject there that the Oregon Department of Agriculture and the Oregon Water Resources Department, if you ever had the time to read the Hundred Year Water Plan, it would make you nervous. It would make you very nervous for our citizens in that, uh, they wanna control that. And there's some logical reasons why they wanna control it, but we have to, this, this plan that I've, uh, and request that I'm giving to the board would put us at a, in a very good position. Uh, because if, you know, Port Orford has plans, but if we have it as a community plan and help them, uh, it just improves their chances of getting some badly needed state and federal funds to upgrade their water system, uh, and, and grow, and grow. Um, so, uh, just concluding here, facilitate conversations among diverse interests. Certainly, the tribes will be very much involved, will help greatly. Uh, don't wanna leave them out. Uh, and, and AOC will navigate us through the process. Um, project to build a common understanding of the full range of interests and values, build capacity and momentum to tackle water challenges collaboratively. There's that word, but it's, it's very appropriate here. And make sure that community-level interests and values are considered and incorporated into regional and state, regional and state level conversations. Counties have a responsibility to the state and their citizens to develop local public facility plans and comprehensive land use plans that include water and planting. Um, so, I mean, Port Orford Harbor, you know, this is a chance for us to say, "We're gonna do everything we can, Harbor, to avoid you drinking saltwater." Uh, and the sooner we get started, absolutely the better. Langless, always needing help. Um, so, yeah, we need to start now. Um, pull all the interests together and AOC will, um, be very instrumental in, in helping us through that process. So, there's, uh, there's my advocacy for this project, Mr. Chair and Board.
Okay. Well, personally, I'm not opposed to this. I don't know if I'm ready to make a, a vote on it today. Um, but I'm, I'm, um, open to the, to discuss.
Um, well, I would ask the Board, you know, I've been working on this off and on for quite some time. I'm, I'm just gonna say it. What are you two willing to do if it's not this as soon as possible to help solve this problem and to put us in the best possible position when it comes to planning? Be specific. Cause this does the work for you and I'll do the work for you.
Well, concerning Port Orford individually, you know, we, everybody in Curry County knows that their infrastructure has been terrible for forty years, fifty years. Well, I imagine at one time it was good. Um, but I started delivering up there in there eighty-two and delivered there for thirty years. And it's the only place on the coast, I think, that gets a hundred inches of rain a year and you couldn't water your yard in the summer because, um, the, most of the water is going out in the ocean underground. So-
They actually, they actually, I learned yesterday, I didn't know this, Commissioner, they actually have a tremendous water table in Port Orford. The, um, the laundromat has a well. Or my, maybe it's Dollar General or both, but it, but it is incredibly producing. But see, if, if, if they had a plan, and this is not to prefer or preference of Port Orford over Harbor or Harbor over Gold Beach or any of that, it's, it's the system that we're, the hand that we're dealt. And to do that, we need help. And we've got some, we've got a great offer here and, uh, tremendous opportunities to leap in, ahead of a lot of other counties.
Chris?
I personally think that this is something that AOC should be wanting to do for us as a county. Uh, with all the fees that we already give them, I don't know why we've gotta come up with another twenty-five thousand dollars to help fund, uh, this plan. And I, I personally don't know that we should be looking to use ARP money to, 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 to fund this. I would like to see AOC, uh, offer, uh, these counties, uh, their services, um, with what we already have and deal with them. With Board, it doesn't work that way in that they, the fees that we pay, of course, both, both of you are at a disadvantage because you don't know much about AOC. You didn't, uh, go to county college and look into the- I didn't go to county college.
You went two times, okay. But here's the point, Mr. Chair, or Commissioner Pass. This is a specific program where other counties are already jumping in with the twenty-five thousand. Okay, this is one percent, one percent. Well, it's a half of one percent of the four-point-four million we'll get. A half of one percent. You two voted for dispatch for seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, which I also supported, but without a second opinion. So, seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand is, is a critical, important issue, but is water not likewise? I mean, I'm, I'm almost pleading with this Board to figure this out. This is, and, don't pass up an opportunity like this. Twenty-five thousand is nothing for what we're gonna get. I don't know how else I can communicate what the stakes are here.
And I, and again, I'll repeat, I'm not opposed to it. I just, I'm, I wanna do more due diligence on my part personally. So, that's, that's where I'm at with this.
So, I'm gonna make a motion, cause I want the public to know that- that this is an incredibly important investment, that we accept the $25,000 for Association of Oregon Counties, specific to the contract that they've done with Ms. Burrright and, uh, Andy Smith, going from, uh, veterans to this project, to help us work with the Oregon Water Resources, the Oregon Department of Agriculture and all the water stakeholders, to serve the citizens of Curry County. And, uh, my friends in Harbor, I'm doing everything I can to get you good drinking water. It doesn't look like I'm gonna get the support, though.
Well, I'll say, I'll say, my friends in Harbor, let me know what you feel. Send me an email, call me, 541-247-3260. So I got a motion? And I think this is, it dies for lack of a second, so.
It is 11:30.
11:32. We're gonna read a, go to public hearing. I, did I see somebody's hand up that wanted to say something? Dave?
Since it died for a lack of a second, if it comes back up again, I'll speak on it then. But I just initially, I questioned whether this is an ARP-eligible project. So, thank you.
So what are you guys gonna do to solve the, what are you gonna do to solve the water problem? What are you two gonna put on the table to start the process?
If I can, then, um, Brookings Harbor Water already has a application that they submitted to the ARP committee, which I believe, I believe it was Brookings Harbor Water, um, because-
No, probably Brookings, you know.
Well, whoever it is, Brookings, there's, there was one, there was one that was submitted for water from South County to do something about the intake down there. I believe that was an ARP proposal-
That's Harbor, that's probably Harbor water.
That was advanced by the ARP committee as one of their, um, proposals to you. And the first thing that this county, this commission spent money on was the, uh, $10,000 for the Langlois water study. So, um, that's for drinking water only type, the, from what I read in the ARP, it's for infrastructure, meaning drinking water only. And the city of Port Orford, I just want to point out, did get their own ARP money also. If they chose not to spend it on drinking water for their people, that's, uh, you know, that's on them. But, um, to what Commissioner Boyce said, this is, this is money for another study, but the money that was spent on the sheriff's comm unit is actually for a physical product, um, that is going to benefit everybody in this county. It's not just for more consultants to do more studies. So I just want to point out.
And I don't want this to go away. I want it to come, come back and, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some calling and-
This is not a study, for God's sakes. It's a plan. And, uh, the, the issue, I'm gonna say again, with the dis, with the dispatch, we didn't get a second opinion, so we don't know if we got a good deal or not. Can't argue that. I don't know how you can, but you probably can't.
I can't, but it, from what I understand, it's a single-source provider. Their Motorola is the only one who is capable of providing for the needs that we had.
We should have had somebody else verify that outside this county. And I give this, I give this board an option to look at that from Coos County. And it was, it didn't, you know, it, it was met with discontent, frankly.
The board did look at it, sir. I was here for the meeting.
Okay, we're done with that?
Yeah, please.
That's over, that's a, that's the pass.
So again, I'm, I'm gonna ask what you two are gonna do. You need to tell the citizens what you're gonna do to solve the water problem if you don't think AOC is the answer.
I did. I told them.
Okay.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna read this thing on, uh, what's it called?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. On today's agenda is a proposed amendment to Article 2, Division 8 of County Code, otherwise known as the Curry County Building Code. On January 12th, 2022, public legal notice was posted in three locations throughout the county. Such notice will have been published in a local newspaper for two consecutive issues prior to adoption of the ordinance. Because statutory requirements have been fulfilled, this ordinance will be read by title unless a member of the board requests for the ordinance to be read in full. As an ordinance must be read in open meeting on two distinct days, at least 13 days apart. Upon motion of the board, a second public hearing will be held on this matter, February 2nd, 2022. A copy of the proposed ordinance will remain available at the Board of Commissioners' office during this time. The title of this ordinance is, "In the Matter of an Ordinance Amending the Curry County Building Code." Does any member of the public wish to make any comments? I don't hear any, see any? Does the board, does the board have any questions?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance to be advanced to a second public hearing?
So moved, sir.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any question, discussion?
I will say, um, I, I did read a lot of this yesterday and, um, it is very well done, very well done.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Thank you for your patience and time on the reading of that. Commissioner Updates? Commissioner Boyce is up first.
We on, are we truly on Commissioner Update?
Yeah. At 12, 11:37. Thanks, Melvin.
You know, we approved a county forestry deal today and then also the hiring of Scott Nichols. You know, we lost eight months on that. And I, I don't know what that cost the county, but, you know, I couldn't persuade you gentlemen eight months ago to take a serious look at this for $1,500. So it's just, uh, it's really disappointing, uh, to have lost that eight months. I appreciate that you supported it today, but I, for the life of me, don't know why you didn't support it earlier. And then, uh, I've asked for grant writer forever. Here's, uh, they more than, more than, more than pay for themselves, but here's USDA invest 8.2 million to build and improve critical infrastructure of rural Oregon. The city of Oakland, uh, Oregon just got a $900,000 grant because they do have a water plan. They're wise. You know, there's been several things that I've brought to this board I think has been very responsible, very worthwhile, very, uh, specific, and so I'm, I'm grouse-ing because, uh, we've lost money. We keep losing money. And the grants are just one example. So I don't have a jail courthouse, uh, report today. No, I'll let that go for now. I think that can wait till the 2nd of February. On our, uh, Housing Committee, um, you know, I'm, I'm very anxious to show the public and the board what I've learned from Union County. I mentioned that just briefly earlier today and I think I have one or two commissioners tuning in. And, you know, we have a, uh, property, uh, inventory, I couldn't think of the right word there, um, real property. And there's a lot that, if we find some one-acre places, we can build some workforce housing. We can build some veterans' housing, um, some affordable. You've always heard me say, it's a critical that we keep our middle class healthy. That's what supports our schools long-term. It supports our law enforcement. It's managed growth, good managed growth. And you see a lot of that going on in Port Orford and it's, uh, I think it's in, in a pretty good favor. In a, in a good pace, responsible pace. Brookings is always booming, thank goodness. Let's see. Wait, I'm not sure what this is, if I need it. Oh, this is, uh, I'll go ahead and give a quick COVID report. I'd like to ask the board to, uh, direct staff jazz would put this on, uh, our county website, uh, COVID information. Uh, just got an email that Curry County is second, uh, Mr. Cecil's second in the state, not in just of the four counties. And so I've got to verify that. I told Gordon Clay there might be some isolated days, uh, but we really need to focus on, uh, hospitalizations and deaths. And overall Curry County is, uh, I mean, I keep an eye on this, but Curry County's been doing pretty well. We want to be very, very careful, though, not to get flat-footed and, uh, you know, and, and yes, there's more discussion on the mask, but I would like to get this, this is good information here from Oregon Health Authority, so that's why I wanted to offer that. And I wonder, wanted to read something from Douglas County and I, I think this is very pertinent and it won't take very long, Mr. Chair. And this is what I wrote this morning, so a couple of things before I go to, or one thing before I go to Douglas County. But, you know, this, this month, we're starting our third year in this program and, and it's, uh, it's, it's been, it's cost a lot of us, uh, several, many, many sleepless nights. You know, thank goodness and it's, it's, uh, you know, some of the experts are saying that internationally, the, the Omicron is, uh, you know, pretty close to the peak. We don't know that for sure, but, uh, it's, it's good information. But information from OHA's Weekend Report, fully vaccinated Curry County, I think you referenced this, Mr. Cecil, 54% with 63% one dose, which means 40, 46% of our citizens, it appears, aren't protected and stand a chance of being hospitalized. And that's where, that's where we step into the, the area of, uh, of rough go, uh, the hospitalizations. As of yesterday, Curry has had 486 transmissions for the year and over 40 a day over the three-day weekend, 120. Thanks for the help, Gordon Clay. But, you know, people know I follow Douglas County. They are very well organized and, uh, they send out information every week. This was actually five days ago, just take me a moment to read it. But the Omicron COVID variant continues to spread rapidly around the world, in the United States and now in Oregon. While we have seen new daily cases creeping upwards of 100 a day, this is Douglas County. But sadly, today, for the first time since August, and this is five days ago, of 2020, Douglas County reported over 200 new COVID cases in a single day and are reporting over 500 new COVID cases the last seven days. They are definitely in our next, no, they're saying, "We are definitely in our next surge of COVID." As we mentioned before, if there's any good news, it is that the, we're at the peak of the Omicron cases in other parts of the world where it's short-lived. There were fewer hospitalizations than with the Delta variant. I think that's very important and I've mentioned that. Most of those infected did not require medical care and deaths were less than with previous waves. Lastly, additional good news is that the primary series of vaccinations provided good protection and that a primary series followed by booster provided excellent, 75% protection and against hospitalization or severe disease. Finally, a good reminder that it is not too late to get your vaccine. Our public health professionals at Douglas, uh, Public Health Network are prepared for surge protocol and while the next few days will likely be very difficult, they are in good position to weather the surge storm, to weather the surge storm. So the only thing I would add to that, you know, what I'm hearing also is that, um, the vaccination doesn't necessarily protect against Omicron. So, uh, you know, that's a personal, totally a personal, uh, decision. Medical's privacy and all that is, I am 100% supporting. It is, it is, it is up to the individual call. So, um, you know, we have people out right now in the annex here, so, uh, we wish them get the best and to get well soon. And, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. That's, uh, I think that's all I have.
Okay. I have nothing. Chris?
Two things. On, one, on that note, I'm going to be seeing my doctor again and with everything that's going on around here, I just want to let this board know that I may be doing some more work from home, um, with my health concerns from all of my past health, uh, problems. The risk for me is much higher than a lot, so, um, I don't want to minimize anyone else. I'm just saying for my own personal, um, and my doctor's concerns, um, I'm, I'm at extreme high risk. I would like to ask this board to look at, um, an ARP workshop, perhaps in our next, um, in our next workshop on the first week of February. I don't know if we have anything planned for that yet. I'm, I'm sure that workshop would be a one-item-only workshop because I am certain that we will have a full house for that workshop. Rhodes has something. On the first?
The 2nd of February.
Oh, the 2nd of February.
First Wednesday.
So, um, I don't know if we can get Rhodes to maybe move theirs. Let's, let's look into that, but I just, I just wanted to have board support that I think we need to get that ARP workshop in place so that we can start to make some decisions on what we're gonna do with that money. Um, if we have board direction to do that, then, uh, then I'll pursue that ARP for that and ask, uh, ask Rhodes if he can put his off or how long it would, if it's, if his is only gonna be five or 10 minutes, then perhaps we can, we can do that. Uh, so do I have board direction to, to pursue that workshop?
Yep. I do, yep.
Okay. The other thing I want to mention is that we are in, or I am in conversation with Rogue Community College. Um, I got an email from them this morning and they are in the process of setting up an initial meeting with me. They just want to hear, um, what we are looking in broad strokes to do and then we will, from that meeting, if they have an interest, plan to have a board meeting where they either come here or they do a, a Zoom meeting, um, with, with the entire board, with our county council. And then we'll also have higher learning involved in that meeting as well. So we can just discuss where we are and, uh, and the potential for what we could do. That's all I have.
How we can get to where we want to go.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, and Anthony, we spoke about this at the beginning. We're gonna not have anything on executive session today, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And higher orders are none, so. We are, we are good to go until, uh, 2 o'clock this afternoon is our Curry County Board of Commissioners Administrative Workshop. So we'll see y'all at 2 o'clock. Meeting is adjourned. Bada boom, bada bing.